Chief. What's this officer's name?
This is Mario Valdez.
Mario, would you please say the pledge?
He was perfect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great water for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please say the word?
Yes, sir. Father God, we come before you tonight, Lord, and we're grateful for the opportunity to be here, and we ask for your guidance, for your will to be done in these courts tonight, Lord. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Ellipart?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Coram, Mr. Clark?
Modification to the agenda?
Yes, we have one modification that needs to be made. Under F1, we have a letter of interest for URA, and so we'll read that when we get to F1 on the agenda.
A rule of consent agenda, you have a lot of time to look at.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Fifteen minutes of regular meeting, August 16th, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellipart?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Communications and appointments. Kathy, please read that letter.
Okay.
This is for the letter of interest for the URA.
I look forward to participating in the combined effort and involvement of the URA to help maintain and plan for obtaining the best environment for our community. I hope to contribute to these efforts, and I'm honored to be on the URA committee. Thank you, Deborah Milne.
Just point that Forrest or read low on.
Yes, sir, you need to vote to appoint her.
So we need a motion?
I move that we appoint Deborah Milne to the URA Committee. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Debbie Milne to the URA Board. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellipart?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, we have some scheduled appearances here this evening. United States Air Force Staff Sergeant Richard Nagley?
Yes.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Good evening, Councilman. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to speak about the Veterans Coalition in the San Luis Valley. My name is Richard Nagley. I am the president of the board. The Coalition is an organization of veterans, which is a little different than a veterans' organization like the American Legion, VFW, DAV. We are a group of veterans that banded together to help each other with issues that are going on in the valley. Our coalition includes nonprofits, governmental agencies, businesses, healthcare providers, anyone in the valley that wants to be involved, whether they're a veteran or not. Could I see a raise of hands for those that are veterans in the room at the moment? Thank you very much for your service. Welcome home. I'm glad to see you, Mayor. Now could I have a raise of hands of all of those that have veterans in their family? Thank you. Thank you for your family's service. This evening, I'd like to update you on some of the issues facing veterans and accomplishments of the Coalition and how you may assist. Military service comes in many forms, and veterans' stories are as diverse as their service. From World War II to post 9/11, from musicians to combatants, veterans' stories reflect personal experiences. Some good, some bad, some traumatic. As you can see from the show of hands, there are veterans in your midst. About 10% of the valley's population are veterans. Of that, 10% are women veterans. 99.9% of the valley's population are connected to veterans. Some veterans are able to make the transition back to civilian life relatively smoothly. However, for some, the return is difficult and brings physical and emotional challenges. Across the country, projects are being developed to assist veterans in this transition. In the valley, the Coalition has stepped up to take the lead. Projects based on horticulture therapy have shown that working in gardens, farms, and ranches can help veterans heal and reintegrate to become productive members of society. The Veteran Fields Program was created to support veterans seeking work in farming and ranching. A grant from Colorado Health Foundation to the San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition and the Veteran Coalition ended earlier this year. Much was learned about veterans' needs and the community in which we live. Colorado ranks seventh in the nation for suicide, and suicide in the San Luis Valley is twice that of Colorado. Three years ago, the Coalition began to work with the Together with Veterans Suicide Prevention Project with the Veterans Administration, my rec. research organization. In partnership with the valley's healthcare providers, we're working to create a suicide prevention model that the VA will be rolling out nationally to rural areas. Again, the Coalition and our healthcare partners have learned much about veterans and suicide in the San Luis Valley. There are only two of the areas of which Coalition has been involved. In your package, you have an organization chart, and you can see where we've been spending some of our time. Now, I'd like to share another important accomplishment of the Coalition. In FYI, 2011, one year before the ad hoc committee that has become the Veterans Coalition, the VA estimated that there were 3,917 veterans in the San Luis Valley. This is a chart in your package also. Of that, there were 1,365 unique patients who received treatment at a VA healthcare facility. So of the 3,900, 1,300 were actually getting some sort of healthcare through the VA. In addition, $20,838,000 in total expenditure came to the valley's veterans. This was for healthcare, home loans, education. Again, the chart is in your package. That was 2011. In 2015, three years after the Veterans Coalition began advocating for veterans, the VA reported that there were 3,556 veterans in the San Luis Valley, a reduction of 361 veterans. Of that, there were 1,403 veterans, unique patients, who received treatment, an increase of 38. So as the number of veterans went down, the number that were receiving healthcare went up. Furthermore, 28,506,000 in total expenditure was received by veterans in the valley. From the 21 million, now we're up to 28,500. The latest report by the VA in FYI 2016, four years after the Coalition began, the VA reported there were 3,269 veterans, a further reduction of 287 veterans. Of that, there were 1,424 unique patients, an increase of 21. Benefits received by those veterans, and this is some subset of the 3,269, not every veteran is getting some sort of benefit. But of the 3,269 now, $30,938,000 came into the valley. That's real dollars. They're coming to your constituents. In 2018, the Coalition began partnering with Volunteers of America. We had been able to place five homeless or to-be homeless veterans in valley housing. Through an unexpected gift, the Coalition was able to augment the food, gas gift cards available through the Alamosa County Veteran Service Officer when his grant ran out. These are gift cards through City Market that can be used for food, for gas, veterans that are in need. Since 2015, we have been able to work with six veterans who are considering suicide. All are still with us. With the Colorado Health Foundation Farming Grant mentioned earlier, we are able to help a woman veteran move her farming operation, White Crow Ranch, from an incubator stage to Phase 1. An operational, small ranch, ready to teach veterans the basic of owning a small farm. In addition, she is about to receive other veterans who need a retreat or a rest. Councilman, every day at the Coalition is a new day. Much like a military triage base, we never know what's going to walk through the door. As the founder of the Coalition, it has been a challenge. Through most of the Coalition's history, there has only been one paid staff, but now we need to expand. To do that, we need to hire additional staff and to reacquire additional volunteers. We are here for that reason, to ask for your financial assistance. We have assisted veterans in all areas, all counties in the San Luis Valley. We will continue to do the same, but we are now in need of help. Thank you for your time and consideration. Hope you will find the services we provide to your constituents a valuable resource, respectfully.
Thank you.
Question?
Sir? Yeah, I've been at a few of your Coalition meetings, and I would like for you just to touch on some of what goes on there and some of who is contacted. My thinking is, and the surprise to me was, it's not a greeting, it's not a meeting where there's just a discussion of problems and committees formed and that kind of thing. You actually have officials from Denver, even in Washington, on the line, as I understand.
We have established credibility with the VA. As a result, we are having monthly conference calls with the Director for the State of Colorado, typically five or six of her assistant directors. She is the Director for the health side of the VA. She has now brought in her counterpart for the benefits side. Veterans come to a room similar to this. They get an opportunity, I hold them to a two-minute timeframe because we only have an hour, but they have an opportunity to talk with posed questions of the VA executives. Other people, we have people calling in. Senator Larry Crowder has called in a number of times. In fact, even though I told veterans they have to behave themselves, they never know who's on the lines. Sometimes they don't believe me. And recently, when a veteran was dealing with the Director for the State, Senator Crowder spoke up, because this is not your typical conference call where people introduce themselves. You don't know who's out there. Typically, we will have some 11 media organizations calling in. We've had the Secretary of the VA call in. We've had Senator Bernie Sanders call in. We've had the Chairman of the Senate Veteran Affairs Committee call in. These are people that the Coalition has been given the VA's conference line priority call for us to invite, and people have actually been there. So those people only speak up if they have the answer to a question. Veterans do not get to talk about their personal issues. It is more of a general issue. If they have a specific issue that's taken offside, they get an opportunity to share their contact information with someone at a senior level, executive level at the VA, and follow up. If the VA doesn't follow up, we follow up with the VA. So this is veterans doing it for each other, the community doing it for each other. We have all of our healthcare provider organizations as part of the partnership, as well as from the Secretary of the VA down, Governor, state senators, reps, our congressional's once a month. And if someone would like to sit in, let me know, and I will give you the number and the code.
That's right, you were talking about that possibility of connecting without necessarily having to be at the Alamosa meeting. I don't know if that's set up yet.
Yes. The conference line is the VA's conference line. What we have done is, in our room at the Grizzly, Oak Grizzly Inn Conference Center, we have a speakerphone. Typically, we have somewhere between 40 and 60 people in the room. The secretary generally has five or six around her table in her office. I only know who's there by the voices or when they introduce themselves to answer a question. But unless, for example, Senator Crowder speaks up, and he spoke up yesterday and said, "When does he get his invitation this time with his number?" Because he wants to put it on his schedule. He doesn't speak up unless he's got an answer to a question someone else doesn't have. It is a listening opportunity. And this has been something that we're now started August a year ago. In addition to that, we have two events during the year. In the summertime, we have our annual event at the National Guard Armory in Alamosa. The last three years, the Director for the State of the VA has come down, been our keynote speaker she asked to be. So this last time, she brought 15 people from Denver of all areas of the VA to answer questions. And then typically, mid-January, we have a welcome-to-new-year dinner for veterans and families of veterans and people that are interested.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Howden?
Mr. Mayor. Counselor. Thanks for your time this evening. Just to be clear, I am a resident of Montevista, live at 45 Donovan Street. I'm also the Chief Executive Officer of Salins Valley Royal Electric and its subsidiary CLO. I think maybe some of you know about those two organizations. We are currently putting fiber optics in the west side of Montevista and looking to bring world-class broadband and a phone service to Montevista. Salins Valley and its subsidiary CLO are, like you, like many of the people here in the room, and this is our home, and this is where we live, look for opportunities to make our communities better. I had an opportunity the other day to meet with the police chief, talk about some of his needs. In that conversation, one of the things I said, because of the fiber optic system that we're building, one of the things that could be done is to put cameras around for the use of the police department. You seemed interested in that and asked if I would come and make a little presentation to the City Council tonight. So I'm here just to tell you that Salins Valley and CLO would be willing and, I think, interested in assisting if that's something that City Council, the police department, the police chief, and the city manager and whoever would be interested in. Not here to tell you should or shouldn't do it. That's a decision, obviously, for council and manager and police chief. But we would be willing to do that kind of a project for the benefit of the community if it doesn't benefit in your perception. So I'm a man of brevity, so that's my presentation. Just to be clear, if you would fix the agenda, my name is L-O-R-E-N, so there's no mistaking about who's talking. I don't want somebody else to be blamed for what I say. I have to answer any questions.
So you're talking about cameras that would exist throughout town? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. They would be set so that it would be available really only to the police department for the benefit, or if the city found out the uses for it, that would be fine. But it's not something that we would, we either Salins Valley, Royal Electric, or CLO would use, monitor, or have access to. It would be solely for the benefit of the police department and the city.
Are these permanent, or is it something that can be moved easily?
You have to think of them as permanent.
Okay.
I think our conversation, the last we had, was we were considering, at least from the chief's perspective, correct me and come wrong, we were thinking about that at just major intersections along 160 for traffic and crime and that kind of thing.
Right. All those decisions are with the police department and council, not my office.
Yeah.
Is there a timeframe we would need to make a decision by?
No.
We've got some time to talk and consider it?
Yes.
Good.
We are currently billing out pretty much everything west of 160 Broadway. So while these are working, it would be fairly efficient to do if there's a need there at that same time.
Right.
But it's not like a one-time deal. Three years, if not, if there's another need someplace, you know?
It's easy to accommodate that.
Yes.
Chief?
Just one thing to really keep in mind is all the money that's been spent in Broadway, the ability to keep it safe, and how nice it would have been to have that kind of option at the skate park and some of the damages that have been out. Much anger that created and how little we could do about it. And I think right now, we have an opportunity to maybe invest in all of that investment to kind of keep it nice. And for the other reasons that have already been discussed, traffic accidents, kind of some ability to maybe prevent some crime, and maybe some accounting and traffic evaluation from that standpoint. Pretty amazing opportunity, personally.
That sounds very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, woman. Citizens comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Does anybody have anything?
Kids are being good. Take questions, man.
Forrest. Ordinance number 887.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have two items under public hearing this evening. One is on ordinance number 887. The second one that's under there is a minor subdivision, which is actually, the requirement in the code is a public meeting, but there's no other place in the agenda just to differentiate those two. So I'd recommend that you turn the public hearing over to our city attorney to run that for ordinance number 887.
Okay.
All right, we'll call the public hearing to order, and typically, the way we'll run this is to see if there are folks that have comments in favor of the ordinance and then or comments that maybe additions that should be considered. And then we can have time for folks that decide they are against the ordinance. So if you wish to speak regarding the ordinance 887, we'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name, and then you can make comments as you feel appropriate. So do we have any folks that wish to speak in favor of the ordinance or make comments concerning the ordinance? Don't everybody raise your hand at once? Okay, seeing, is there folks that wish to speak against the ordinance? Or make comments concerning the ordinance?
Maybe I'll present the changes to the council.
All right, let's maybe have, yeah, we'll maybe call Forrest to kind of look at some of the changes we've considered here.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So after the first reading of this ordinance, there were some good discussion from the public on some things to add to this. And we did, Nita did a bunch of research on, you know, other codes and what they had, and so we did add a couple of items to the original draft. One that really described what lawful burning is, what you can burn, which, you know, grass, clippings, leaves, hay, straw, you know, yard waste, right? But it excludes burning trash, garbage, or, well, I'm sorry, garbage and those kind of things. We also created within this ordinance, a burning timeframe, which basically says you can begin only between two hours after sunrise and two hours before sunset. And I think the idea being that, one, you're not burning stuff in the middle of the night, partly because of the odors and also control of the fires. And so, you know, you start your little fire two hours before sunset, that should probably be concluded by then. It also says that any fire should be less than 10 feet from any property line and should be constantly attended by a competent person until such fire is extinguished. And I think that that attendant thing is a really important component of that. Someone needs to be there, watching the fire, physically present. And then also, we have guidance on the methods of burning within there. Obviously, in here, it says it's preferable to have a non-combustible container covered with wire mesh to keep sparks flowing out and start a new fire as yard waste may be burned on the ground. In the area cleared of all ground debris, not exceeding eight feet and die in there. So we're not talking about large-scale fires. Also saying that ground burning should be approached with caution, so if there's high winds or gusty winds present, the fire must be extinguished with water. And this is kind of a key piece of this that Nita found in some of the other ordinances, that fire enhancers or additional fuel may not be intentionally added to the fire. So, you know, you don't add two gallons of gasoline to your five pounds of waste and suddenly set the world on fire. So those are basically additions based on the public comments. Other than that, the ordinance remains the same, you know, and it really is designed for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. It does, of course, contain the existing ordinance part that talks about that while you're legally burning, if you have smoke or odors from the burning of trash, leaves, weeds, refuse, or other material which creates annoyance to others, that is a nuisance, and the police department has the right to shut your fire down because of that. So if there's complaints about the smoke or the odors, and hopefully prohibiting burning garbage will alleviate some of that. So I don't know if you have any other questions, but those are basically the changes that we made in between drafts.
Do you have the second reading? Will wait on?
Yes, sir. So later on in the agenda would be a second reading for final passage of this ordinance. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess it doesn't sound like there's any other comments, so we'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to the council.
About a minor subdivision? Back again, you guys seem a lot like.
Okay, so in front of the council's evening is a minor subdivision application for 2258 East Drive. There was a public hearing held on August 23rd, 2018 by the Montevista Planning Commission to review this application for a minor subdivision. The applicant, Manu Pacheco, is here this evening, and it's a 2.1-acre parcel located at 2258 East Drive. There is in your packet a beautiful greater grand county map that shows where that parcel's located. And if you have that map handy, you know, one of the concerns raised by the neighbors, and there were definitely some concerned neighbors at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, if you look at that purple parcel, that's the parcel that's under this minor subdivision. And then one that's the rectangle right to the east.
Point it out on your map. Four colors are in black and white, so all colors are the same.
So, yeah, so we can see the purple majesty. Okay, so one of the concerns from the neighbors was the Okay, so, one of the concerns from the neighbors was the wooded lot that's on the east side of that parcel, but that's actually, the rectangular parcel there is owned by the city of Montavista, so there would be no changes to that parcel. There were other discussions about the potential development pattern of the parcel, and the parcel is zone residential medium density. And under a zoning, that is a 12 unit per acre potential for development. What they have conceived here is create two parcels. The larger of the two parcels would have a single-family residence on it. That'd be the east parcel, which, sorry, I'm not speaking well today. We started with that problem yesterday. But if you look in your packet, there's actually a picture of how this lot would be subdivided, and the larger of the two lots would be a future single-family residence, which would have its own water and sewer connections to the city. And then the west parcel, which would remain, is about 0.6 acres. There is not an opportunity, if this is approved as a minor subdivision, for another minor subdivision to be approved. We'd have to go through a full-blown major subdivision approval. You get one shot at a minor, and honestly, if you don't approve it tonight, they could come back with a full subdivision application, which is more risk. But if you look at the remaining 6/10 acre parcel, which, you know, doesn't have a development plan for it, and the applicant can speak to, there are plans not to currently develop that, then you have 6/10 of an acre at a 12 unit per acre density. So, really, once you figure out your infrastructure, that's probably potential for five units probably in reality. Once you put in lots, and you have to meet the lot size requirements and everything, so it's four or five lots. So, that being said, the planning commission heard, you know, testimony both for and against the proposal, and the planning commission recommended that the city council approve this application tonight, and if you do approve the application, at the end of the evening, the mayor would then, you have to vote to approve it, the mayor would then actually sign the plat map, and it would be filed with the county clerk's office and would be an official subdivision. So, I don't know if you all have any more questions of me or the applicant that's here this evening. She can speak to any concerns you have.
What's the timeframe on this? Like for a single-family, family, a single-family residence? Like, is there a timeframe on?
So, there's not actually, you know, because, after it being subdivided, there's not actually an impetus to actually build anything, right? It's just like it'd be essentially two lots. There's not a timeframe that a new house would have to be built on it. We have a number of vacant lots like that, of course, in the city. So, this doesn't guarantee the actual development of it. It just creates this potential for these to be cut into two pieces.
Just for clarification, I think you kind of alluded to that already, but the, with the subdivision, absolutely, this just came up during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as I understood it, absolutely nothing changes in terms of what can be done with the property.
Yes, essentially that, right, other than the fact that once it's subdivided, the smaller remainder parcel, because of its boundaries, has a lower density potential, because once you cut it in half, then that should calculate what you do with the larger, but you really, two acres, you can do 24 units. At this point, you wouldn't be able to do that after it's cut into two pieces. It probably would be 20 maximum, might be actually 18, depending on, of course, you have to have, we'd have to have streets and sidewalk, curb, gutter, modern sewer infrastructure, and minimum lot sizes. So, yeah, probably reduce the development potential by doing this to 18 units.
Which doesn't seem huge.
You know, it is an interesting thing in the zoning of that property, you know, because the neighbors, essentially, once you get there, it becomes very rural, right? Across the street to the north, you've got some rural zoning, and then you've got county and as well to the east. So, you have larger parcels with folks that have, you know, animals and such. So, you know, it's kind of the edge of the city, but that is the zoning that existed when I got here, and I assume it's existed for quite some time.
And there's really no other objection by the neighbors, other than what's already been taken care of by the city owning the city lot that won't change with the trees and the?
Yeah, there's surely was some concerns about potential future traffic. Once again, the underlying zoning that's there, you know, anticipates that, and there is some traffic on East Drive certainly, because you've got multifamily just to the west of it, and then just up the way, you've got senior living facility. So, you know, there's certainly some traffic there. I do think, based upon the topography of the lot, developing it to its maximum density from an infrastructure standpoint would be fairly costly. I mean, it's pretty easy to put two units on there and service them with water and sewer. I think it would provide some difficulty to make it much denser.
Right. So, it seems to me like it's actually, actually an advantage to allow this so that there are two major, two units, two residences there, as opposed to the possibility of 18 to 20. Is that?
Well, it reduces from 24 to the potential at some point of 18 to 20. I would think, based on the infrastructure costs and my background in development, that your per-lot development costs for the water, sewer, street, sidewalk, curb, gutter, et cetera, compared to current lot values of the city would be relatively high.
Yeah.
So, you know, is it really economically feasible to put in that density right now? Probably not in a non-subsidized program. And I think, you know, I can't speak to how it was zoned, when it was zoned, but there is the multifamily apartments right there, and I think that there was a thought that that would extend to the east at some point. That's the only way I can make sense of zoning, actually, so. It's kind of high forecast and same zoning, which is fascinating.
So, we just need to approve or deny this based on the percolation from the zoning?
Yes, sir. That'd be correct.
I would move that the council approve the minor subdivision as presented from the applicant.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to accept the zoning of this property. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counsel Lorenz?
Aye.
Counsel Elifort?
Aye.
Counsel Segala?
Aye.
Counsel Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Liquor license?
Yes.
Peaster Marketing?
Pester?
Huh?
Pester?
Peaster.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, counsel. I come before you with a renewal request from Pester Marketing Company doing businesses at Alta Convenience Store number 3401 at 1331 Grand Avenue in Montavista. They have completed all the paperwork necessary for renewal. I've spoken with the police department. There have been no issues. You will see in your packet where they were denied a liquor license in Del Mart, and that's because Del Mart doesn't have any 32 liquor license. So, they weren't denied based on any wrongdoing. They were denied based on the constraints of liquor license in Del Mart. So, I would recommend that council approve the renewal for Pester Marketing Company.
Questions?
Any comments?
Yeah.
It's going to use a motion.
Yeah, somebody's got it.
Gary's not going to. I, I move.
Go ahead.
We're all politely waiting. I move that we allow Pester Marketing Company, also known as Alta Convenience at 1331 Grand Avenue, to renew their liquor license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow Peaster, Pester Marketing Company doing businesses at Alta Convenience, 3401. That's convenience store number, correct? 1331 Grand Avenue, Montavista, to renew their liquor license. Is there any more discussion? Nita? Aaron Beer?
Counsel Johnson?
Aye.
Counsel Segala?
Aye.
Counsel Lorenz?
Aye.
Counsel Elifort?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Forrest, you can do the second reading.
Well, sir, if you all want more discussion, I'm happy to come up and do that, or you could entertain a motion from the council.
I'm going to continue the motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 887 prohibiting outdoor open burning under second reading as amended.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the ordinance number 887 for prohibiting outdoor open burning. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counsel Lorenz?
Aye.
Counsel Segala?
Aye.
Counsel Elifort?
Aye.
Counsel Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'd just like to thank Nita for all of her work on this, because she did most of it.
Thank you, Nita. Contract agreements and leases. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Mayor, council, can't believe it's been six months. It's been six months since we stood here for the first time and talked with you guys about the idea of doing some economic development in the city of Montavista. And I'd like to have you guys look over here to my right, and I put together a little presentation just to kind of let everybody know where we're at, because I get tons of questions every time I'm walking down the street. Where are we at with this? Where are we at with that? So, I figured this would be easier to put this together. So, we're going to start off with, as you remember, first things first, as you remember when we first started this, it was just an idea. We put the company together, and it was pretty much just me and, you know, again, just an idea. And so, what we did is I put together a team, first thing I did, and I'm not going to go through all the writing down there. I mean, you guys, you guys know who I am. I'll explain who Robert is. Robert's the center guy here. Robert Fajarin is, he used to work with different government agencies. He's done a lot of historical work on historical preservations of buildings. Furthermore, he's done a lot of grant writing. That's the reason why I brought him on board, because he's a kind of a grant writing specialist. Plus, he understands city planning. He also worked as a city planner for the city of Central City and helped with all of that during the construction of a lot of the casinos up there. So, he's got a lot of experience when it comes to city planning. So, I brought him on board. And then, this happy guy over here, this is David Armenta, I brought him on board as well. David is, David is special. David's unique. What David does is he has the gift to talk to somebody for five minutes, I kid you not, and know everything there is to know about that person, and understand their business in a way that he could help market that business. And so, he's a marketing specialist. So, I brought him on board because he's just got a very unique talent, and he sees things sometimes that I don't see. So, I brought him on. So, also, at the last presentation, I don't know if you remember this, but Fennell also did a presentation. And if you remember, he had six empty buildings, and he was offering free rent and anything we could possibly do, and to help him out, and that's exactly what he said yesterday, when I met him for the last time. We actually filled his last building yesterday. They signed the contract. So, we're very excited about that, to be able to fill his building. And then, one of the things I wanted to talk with you guys about is, you guys had some real estate that was empty buildings that were in various different stages of disrepair. So, we took some of those down. First one I wanted to talk about was 117 Adams. As you guys know, that one is from the bank, Rio Grande Savings and Loan. That was a donation to the city as far as economic development goes. So, we've taken that building. We've taken on the old police station, the ambulance bays behind the police station, the Valley Prep building, and the Baptist Church on Broadway. And what that means, basically, is that is generating 500, over a half million dollars a year in taxable commercial properties. So, those are back on the market now, and we're able to start collecting taxes on those at a commercial rate. So, that's great. The, oh, and I'm sure some people know Tracy in town, and this is what she said. She said she definitely has seen an increase in interest in Montavista over the last several months. So, these are new businesses that are coming to town. And now, these are different stages. Some of them have already had their grand opening. Some of them have already opened. Some of them are in the middle of the renovations, but these are signed, contracted, these are done deals. Some of them are just not open yet because they're still in the middle of renovations. But we got, obviously, the Sonomi, that was the very first one we talked about, the Asian Restaurant. We've been working on that building for a long time, so that one's coming. Stretch's Barber Shop, Lunatic Performance, which is a gentleman in town. He does vehicle performance type stuff, and he talked him into going off on his own. We got G and H Fabricary, Ruben's Appliance. That's going to be a great one. That's going to end one of your buildings. So, it's going to go into the old police station, his appliance store. This gentleman has been doing repairs around the area for years, and I convinced him that it's time to open up a store, so. So, we got a store coming, SL Voices. We didn't have one place in the valley that had all the information, like one community calendar that had all the events that are going on in the valley, and they do a podcast. They do information on different businesses in the valley. So, it's very interesting. What's really cool about this is you'll be able to go to their website. I don't think they have it up yet, but you'll be able to go to their website and merge their calendar with your calendar, so it'll alert you of all the events that are going on in the valley and keep everybody informed. So, that's a really cool company. Red Door Books, Next Level Fitness, he finally is opening. American Diesel, that's the last one that we just filled Fennell's business with, and Wise Bounty. These, this couple, they used to work for another company. They moved here and started a water filtration company, and it's a very impressive water filter. Actually, I had a bunch of friends over for the weekend, and they thought my water tasted better than, than a bottle of water from the well. So, because we use their filter. So, it was, it was very impressive. So, those are the new businesses. That's 10 new businesses in six months. Not too bad, guys, not too bad. So, I wanted to do 12. I wanted to, but that's where we're at. And I thought this was very nice of Joseph to say. Huge reason why he decided to set up his shop, American Diesel, here in Montavista, is because he can, he wanted to work with me on the business coaching side of things. So, I thought this was a very kind thing for him to say. And he'll be moving his family here, so. That's what it's all about right there, I think. So now this, don't get too excited about this. This is, well, you can, I guess, but I, I, what I, I guess what I'm trying to say on this is I, these are companies that I've coached at various different levels. Some of them, I've been in several times and been coaching them and helping them on a weekly basis. Some of them I've only visited once or twice, gave them some ideas. Some people like my ideas, some people don't like my ideas. But these are, you ask me to keep track of everybody I've been talking with, so that's everybody I've talked to. Any questions on that? Yes?
Yeah, do you have a print shop that anybody has mentioned?
A print shop.
Considering moving to, yeah, we lost our printer.
Oh, yes, actually, we've.
Just curious.
Yeah, I've been talking with a couple of people about, well, actually, two people in particular. One actually wants to expand a print shop that she already currently owns to a second location. And then one gentleman wants to just set up a FedEx store here. So that would go in the, he's actually looking at the Facet building and one of those locations in the Facet building to a FedEx. Those aren't on this list, obviously. Those, these are people that are existing 'cause part of the, part of the agreement was I would coach existing businesses and help existing businesses. So these are, you know, you know, all these businesses were here before. I thought this was kind of funny. Met with Aaron Meeks the other day and apparently we've caught the attention of Senator Bennett. And they're kind of impressed with what's going on down here. They said they've never heard of a town of forty five hundred having ten new businesses in six months. So they're wanting to know how we did it. I told them, I said, people just got out of the way. They just got to work, right? So now this is really cool. Now, this is a little bit exciting. I'm gonna geek out on this a little bit. We've just teamed up with a company called Gradberry and they do data. Now, I don't normally geek out about that and get excited about that, but obviously, data is king. And when it comes to bringing new businesses, let me, I just wanna explain this just a little bit. In order to bring a business such as Home Depot here, we have to have data. We have to under, they need to know how many employees are within a five mile radius of their business that they can hire. They need to know how many people can afford their products within a five mile radius, ten mile radius, twenty mile radius. And these, these guys here actually teamed up with us and we are now partners in providing that data. More importantly, this is super, this is where I get excited. I can click on there and I can type in, let's just, I keep using Home Depot as an example. Let's just say, I can type in Home Depot, Colorado, and it'll pull up the entire specs of a town, the demographics of a town when Home Depot broke ground. So I can, basically what that means is I can reverse engineer and I can come to you guys on the next meeting and say, according to our population and according to our traffic numbers, these are the businesses that normally move in. Boom, 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 boom. And we have the data to back it up. We can then present it to them. It's, that's huge, that's huge. It's so huge that actually Kevin Wilkins, who was here a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago, was shocked at the powerful, at the power of the tool. And that's what he said. He actually tried to subscribe to that exact software. It was two fifty a year for him, so. So, and they teamed up with us. It doesn't, it's nothing for us. So we're able to use it for Montavista at no charge.
Nice.
And this just gives you an example. So this, this is an overlay. I'm just gonna show you a couple of what it can do. This is an overlay and it shows you what, what opportunity zones, enterprise zones, the census hub zone areas, you know, and various things like that. And you can see us on the map there and we're pretty much all those zones. The importance of an opportunity zone is right here. Basically, it allows individuals and corporations to defer taxes, which is huge. So if somebody wants to come in and invest, let's say somebody wants to invest in Montavista and they wanna bring in two hundred thousand dollars. And they buy a building and we renovate that building and they put a business in there. For the next ten years, they don't have to pay taxes on the gains. If they turn that into a million dollar business and sell it, they don't have to pay taxes. That's a big deal.
That's huge.
That's huge. So that happened just this year. So, and it, you know, there's a couple of things that it excludes. They call them, I don't know why the government calls it this, but sin businesses such as massage parlors, gambling, racetracks. It doesn't include those. But it includes just the normal businesses that most people would have opened. And again, after twenty twenty six, actually, I believe I, that's incorrect. It's twenty twenty eight. I misspoke on, or I miswrote that. It's twenty twenty eight, but it's tax free. So enterprise zones, it explains what an enterprise zone is and it shows where those are in correlation to where we are, which we are right in the middle of an enterprise zone. So now I can take all this data, right? And I can take this back to these businesses and say, not only do we have the right, I can pull up the employees, right? So say they have, their average employee is twenty five to thirty five and needs to make thirty thousand dollars a year. I can pull it up and I can say, this is how many people, you know, from where, from in Montavista that qualify to be an employee at your plant or your factory or store or anything like that. And then not only that, you know, if you bring a business here, these are the, these are the benefits. And I can give them a whole list of the benefits to tell you. And then it talks about hub zones. I'm just gonna burn through this real quick. And, and this is what I wanted to talk with you guys a little bit about. So this is, this is kind of the important data that, just to show you guys, and you'll see why I keep using Home Depot as an example. But just to show you, this pulls up the market, five miles, fifteen miles, twenty five miles. Obviously, Montavista is right in the middle and is swallowed by the five mile. So we're not even extending the five mile mark there. But what's cool about it, and I know it's hard to see on this, is it actually pulls up all the data. It pulls up the age of the, average age of the people within that, within those areas, five mile, fifteen mile, twenty five mile. How much money they make? Are they white collar workers? Are they blue collar workers? You know, this is great if you wanna be, bring tech center in. How many white collar workers do I have in that town that can work there? How many blue collar workers if I wanna bring in something that's not a tech center, for example? And then the drive time. So this shows you a map of the drive time for Montavista. And then it breaks it down on, on the important, it shows like the payroll, how much these people make and how far away from Montavista they live. I mean, it's all kinds of different data that we can pull to recruit new businesses. I don't know if I can iterate how, how important this data is. This is the decision maker. In other words, I can go, now I can go now to Home Depot and I can say, you know what? Surprisingly, the demographics are exactly, almost exactly the same as Durango. And they can say, no, it's not. Yes, it is. Here's the demographics. And believe it or not, our demographics in this area and how many people live around Montavista is exactly the same five, fifteen and twenty five miles or minutes from the same Home Depot location in Durango. Does that make sense? So now we can convince, or we can give them the data for them to make an educated decision. This is data that they normally don't have. So, all right, I'm done geeking out. Okay, so this is, this is really cool. It's awesome. It's a huge tool. We just got it last week. So we're, I've got these guys full timing it right now. We're reverse engineering every business in Colorado. So I can tell you, KFC comes in when it's this much population, this many traffic numbers. You know, I can tell you exactly every business in Colorado and what the demographics were when they broke ground. That's huge.
That's huge.
That's big. Okay. And I know people get excited about names they recognize. So these are all the people that I'm talking to right now in various stages that are interested in Montavista. Okay, these are actually people that have actually returned my call and we've had a conversation. And we've actually sat down and talked. We're at various stages of talking with them. But these are the ones that we've been talking with. This does not include, again, these are just names that are recognizable. This doesn't include distilleries that are wanting to start and the tech schools that we're talking with and all those other businesses that nobody would recognize if I put their logos up here. So we're literally in a couple of, several dozen, actually. We're up in the thirty, probably thirty different companies right now that we're talking, you know, like the, we're still working with the data centers and we're still talking with the tech schools. And that's just all just in various stages of where everything goes. So, and then, this is my last slide and I'm super, super excited to announce this. Nobody has heard about this at all. This is, you guys are hearing it firsthand. So yesterday, I met with the American Baptist Churches of the Rockies and they have decided to give us and donate that building to Mentoring Giants, which is a new company that I've started and is separate from LBA. And we are going to be bringing in people from all over the country to do business training right there. So we're gonna renovate that building. You know, obviously, we gotta do some renovations with the building. But once it's done, that'll be Mentoring Giants Training Center.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's gonna be huge 'cause that, that bring, that, we're average, we're gonna average probably about a hundred people a month that are gonna go through that school. And that's on a, that's being super conservative. My buddy, my buddies that do it right now, you know, like Tony Robbins and, you know, all these other guys, they, you know, they're hitting five thousand, ten thousand people who go through their, their schools on a monthly basis. So, but we're out here a little bit, you know, it's in LA or we're not in Miami where it's easy to fly to. So, you know, I'm being, I'm being super conservative. I'm not as popular as Tony Robbins. So, you know, I know that. So I'm not, I'm not expecting to hit Tony Robbins' numbers. But, you know, I'm, I'm expecting, you know, a hundred, a couple hundred people a month once we get this thing rolling that are coming in. That's just new businesses, are new people that are just coming here just to visit and spend three to four days for the training, which means they're gonna be at the hotels and the rest of the stuff.
I was gonna ask you, are you gonna house them there just to use it for training?
Just training, yeah. It'll be strictly training and we'll have one meal a day that we'll provide there. But they have the breakfast and their dinners that they can, they'll have to fend for themselves.
What a great building that is.
It's a beautiful building. I'm super excited about it. I'm really excited the fact that they were willing to work with us on that. That's gonna be a big deal, I think.
That's a big deal. I've wanted to do something with that for ages. It wasn't a business training center.
So that's, that is the end of my fancy slides there. So I, if you remember, we had an agreement, this, I believe it's in your packet, that the agreement was, you know, Forrest is kind of a, kind of a hardcore businessman here. When we first did this, he asked me to, you know, cut my, you know, normally a contract's a year contract. He asked me to cut that in half 'cause nobody knew who I was, right? I was new down here. So he wanted to test it out. And we also cut the, what we charged in half to give it a try for six months. So I guess I'm here to ask for a renewal and I would like it to be a year, a one year renewal 'cause I think I've proven that I'm just not a fly-by-night operation. I hope. I hope you guys are happy with, I guess I should've asked you that before I asked. But anyway, so I'm just here to ask for a renewal and I'm hoping that we'll be able to go up to the regular, regular fee and a year contract. So I don't have to come in here and bug you every six months.
Question?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was reading.
Where's your proof that you have talked with all these people?
Excuse me, can you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. State your name, she said.
Jim Poston, forty seven Adams Street, Montavista.
And where's my, I'm sorry, say it again.
Your proof is?
My proof is I'm announcing it in public. If any of them have a problem with it, they can stand up and say something. I've talked with every one of them.
And your proof is?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm one of the people he's talked to.
Okay.
I'm one of the people, excuse me, I'm Mark Allof. SL Voices and Wise Bounty, which would not be in existence without Mr. Douglas's help. He has spent lots of time coaching us. I am not shy of, and he'll, he'll tell you, I'm not shy about texting him at ten o'clock at night. Because that's where, because that's where, he doesn't always answer me. But he goes the next day. Because that's when the question popped in my head. So that's when I texted it and that's, you know. He has helped us understand, and my husband worked for one of the largest gravity fed water purification companies for the last thirteen years. We left that, we moved to Montavista. We wanted something, we wanted to provide something that you don't have to wait for filter and that you can just, you know, go your see. Mr. Douglas helped us. He had the technical knowledge. He knew how to do the filter. We didn't know how to market it. We didn't know how to get the word out there. That's where Mr. Douglas came in. He did, we didn't know how to price it. We didn't know how to advertise it. Mr. Douglas stepped in and did that. We saw the need for a centralized location for information. We saw the need to help bring community together by talking with people such as yourself, which we have not done yet, but we're coming. And we wanna hear the good things. We wanna fill SL Voices with so much good that the bad part, every town has their bad part, you know. But if we fill up with enough good news, we're not here to cause controversy. We're not going to carry controversial talk shows. We're not going to do things that we wanna talk about. What do you wanna talk about? What do you want the people of Montavista to know that you're doing to help build them up? What is the police department doing that is, you know, making, making our streets safer? And by the way, we appreciate you and we'll be talking to y'all too. And we're gonna, we've already done a podcast with Mr. Douglas. The one thing that he has done, if I had, if I had to choose one thing that he's done out of all these things that is absolutely priceless, I don't know what you're paying him, it's absolutely priceless, is that he has given us the confidence and the knowledge that we can build our own business. I heard somebody say not too long ago, if you're smart enough to make money for somebody else, you're smart enough to make it for yourself. So go ahead and build your dreams before somebody else hires and builds theirs. And Mr. Douglas has helped us do that. So I don't know if that satisfies your question of proof or not, but, and I'm not sure what would satisfy that question. But I believe that Mr. Douglas has done Montavista a fantastic service and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. In all fairness, Adam is probably one of the most knowledgeable guys In all fairness, Adam is probably one of the most knowledgeable guys I've ever met when it comes to water filtration, so if you, anybody needs water filters, that's your man. Yes, sir.
Uh, I wanted to just add something, just to put some people's minds at rest, cuz I have heard this in, in the community, you had a lot of, um, franchises and fast food and all of that. What I've come to find out about how this works is, yeah, I don't wanna see a town full of franchises and, it just, but this, uh, they, they may work and they'll research that, and if there's too many of them, they're not gonna come in.
Right.
So, that's an automatic protection. The other thing is that with business expanded by virtue of these recognizable names and faces, uh, logos, um, that opens the opportunity for more mountain pop type of business, uh, taking advantage now of all that traffic, because our traffic is unique, it's this half million vehicle count per year. They're not driving out here to find a McDonald's. If McDonald's wants to, if they can justify setting up here, then they will.
Yeah.
But they're not coming out here to do that, they're coming out here for, um, a taste of the, of the local, uh, area. They don't, uh, they're not here, they got fast food places. So, I just wanted to point that out, that if they decide to come in, it's gonna be because they've studied and they're gonna, it is working.
Totally agree with that. And then, the other thing, and I probably should've mentioned this in the, in the thing, in, in the presentation, is that before you can ask a business like a nationwide company to come down here, we need to show that our own community is supporting our own community. And so, it was really important for me to, if you notice, all those ten businesses are local businesses. One, because of the fastest ones I can get to open, cuz they're local, and two, um, is because, once we fill up these empty storefronts and a outside business comes in, they can see that, oh, people are shopping here, people are supporting their own community, then, then they'll look closer at, uh, possibly moving here.
Right.
And I know for a fact, I've tried for years to, I don't know, court different businesses, Panera Bread and different things, and the demographics were not here, and I kept telling them, oh, yes, they are, it's not just Montevista, it's the entire San Luis Valley, we are one place, and we draw people from all over the valley.
That's how I got T-O.
And beyond, and so now we kind of have that proof.
Yes, and we, and now we have the day, the data to back it up.
Yes.
Because that, before we didn't have that, and now that we do, that changes, that's a game changer, I'm telling you, that's a game changer big time, because it, when they say that, we can say, well, did you know that there's fifty thousand people in the valley, and they're like, what? They didn't realize that, and did you know, these are where they shop, you know? I'm, I'm sorry?
Why aren't they, if there's that many people, why aren't they shop, why is Montevista, it seems like, dying? I mean, you presented, excuse me, my name is Dee Dee Johnson, you presented a great thing, but it doesn't seem, why, why do Montevista people wanna bring McDonald's here?
Montevista people?
Or home people?
Do you have a particular place you shop for?
I, I think that there are tremendous, this, Montevista has a tremendous, um, opportunity for small businesses and people to have, make livings. I don't think that we need to have that type of thing here.
Well, if-
It's within driving distance, fourteen miles, all right.
Well, and, and again, that's, that's what I was talking about, is, it was important to fill it with local businesses first. Local businesses, get them filled, fill up this, the empty buildings, and then, that's just a part of natural growth, then you start expanding into, you know, other businesses, and bringing in na- national companies and larger companies, and that's just part of growth, that's what you hired me to do, so, um, that's what I'm doing.
Yes, ma'am. Would you mind going back, it was the second slide, maybe, with the ten businesses?
Okay.
It might answer some questions.
Can you hold on?
Yeah, I think we're chosen and still.
I think it might answer some of his questions.
Okay.
If you told us where those businesses are located or are going to be located.
Sure, you bet. Yes, sir, you have a question?
I, I have a question, but I'll defer to the council.
Okay. These are the ten businesses. So, Tsunami is gonna be in one seventeen Adams Street. Stretch's Barbershop just had his grand opening, he's right across the street from the bowling alley.
He's a local guy?
He's a local guy. Lunatic Performance is, um, Mr. Luna, I came up with the name, I thought I was catching. And, uh, he is a local mechanic, and he specializes in building, rebuilding turbos. And so, what I, what we talked about doing, and we got approval from Forrest, he'll be renting the back of the Valley View Print Building, because there's a garage back there, but he doesn't do traffic, all his turbos are shipped in. So, he just needs a, he just needs a shop, and it's a perfect shop, there's a shop back there, but it's a terrible storefront, cuz it's in an alley. So, he just needs a place for the stuff to get dropped off and sent, and then shipped back out. He rebuilds, he rebuilds them right there at the shop and then ships them out.
And that's the value publishing?
Yeah, in the back of that, uh-huh. Um, G and H Embroidery, that is a company that is, uh, uh, came with Calvary, they, he sent them over, um, they're going in, I'm not sure which building they decided on.
Salem.
Your, your building, okay, so that's, uh, his building. Rubens Appliance, again, that was one I mentioned, he's been a, uh, repair guy for a long time. Root, uh, I'm sorry, Forrest just approved that one, he's going in the old police station in the front. Um, SLV Voice, SL Voices, we just talked about them. Red Door Books, she's opening up right there, I think everybody's seen that, the little bookstore there.
Where is that?
She's right across from Next Level Fitness, actually. Next Level Fitness is in the old, uh-
Skid building.
She thought, now Red Door Books is open?
No, and, and that's not what I said on these, I said, these are all in various stages of being open, she's renovating, actually, she's got all the books in there now, she was sick, I've been helping her, I helped her get all, you know, she's got all the books organized and their shelves are up and everything's ready to go, she's just trying to get over her, she had a little bit of sickness there, so she's trying to go with it. Next Level Fitness, we all know him, that's Michael Mora, young gentleman in our, in our community. American Diesel, that's the gentleman that lives in Sanford, and he's commuting an hour to, to sto, start his shop here, and it's in Fennell's old, uh, building on Adams Street, the, uh, car storage, classic, classic storage, so that's where he's gonna be. And then Wise Bounty, um, again, that's Adam, and, 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 uh, they do, um, the, uh, water filtration systems, so, um, he doesn't need a storefront on that one, I'm showing him how to do drop ship and ship, and shipments, you know, out of his home right now, so that's where he's based out of. So, those are the ten businesses, any questions on that?
How, how long do you foresee before the Asian restaurant's over?
I, we have just now, it's taken probably, oh, Jesus, she can vouch for this, it, it 's been out of my hands on that one, we have, we're waiting and waiting and waiting, we finally got the building over to URA.
Right, so URA, and if I can interject on that, so the URA has, um, accepted the building, and actually will issue an RFP for our development, which, um, you know, Mr. Douglas will probably be an applicant, there could be others, um, basically with the development and business plan for the building, um, to renovate and get it up and running, so, that actually happened Tuesday night. Is that Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Um, so, we're in the process of getting the property from the bank, and then, um, we will issue an RFP, I believe we'll issue it at the next, um, URA meeting, and then that process will be rolling, so, you know.
So, that one's in the works, it's not a open running business?
No, but it, that's what I'm saying, these are all, these are all done deals, they're just in various stages of opening, whether they've already had their grand opening, or whether they're in the middle of renovation, which, the Tsunami Restaurant, that's where we're at with that one. So, um, we've already got approval for, to put the commercial kitchen in, we've already got the approval to do the flooring and all that stuff, we're just literally waiting on paperwork, so, once that's done, we're, we're knocking it out.
In, in embroidery shop, they're hoping to be open by the first week of October.
Perfect.
And what's the location of that one?
Yeah, that was his building.
Across from near Ferris's building, but one next to it.
Oh, yes, dear.
I did a lease with them, so they're in-
They're, they're a fun deal.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm not saying that I'm responsible for these, that's not what I'm saying. Matter of fact, there's a bunch of businesses that have opened, they're in, that could be on this list, but I had zero talks with them, and they're just, like Debbie Garcia, she's opening up the, the, um, the boutique, yeah, the boutique, and I had nothing to do, she didn't come and ask me any advice, so I didn't put them on the list. These are just strictly people I've talked with, and I've helped in just various stages. Some of them I'm complete hands-on, one hundred percent, and then some of them I'm just coaching along. And some of them, I haven't done anything other than just talk with them, and explain different locations, and showed them different locations. Like American Diesel, for instance, he already had a business, he was a mobile service, and I convinced him, I said, you know, I told him, I said, look, you're spending a lot of time driving, I said, you're, you're too talented to be sitting on the road behind a windshield, I said, you need to have a location so that everybody's bringing their trucks to you, and you can just do it all, boom, 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 yes, you'll make a lot more money that way. Anyway, long story short, I convinced him to bring in Monty.
And they have their license?
Yeah. Yes.
Just wanted, I think I, uh, obviously know the, the answer, but I wanted to get Forrest's input on the, uh, budget impact of what we're talking about here, in terms of the, um, uh, obviously that we've heard about the performance, and now we wanna increase the expense, and obviously, you've studied that more than, than anybody, so, give us a summary of that.
Hmm, okay.
Or you're, risk your opinion, would be fine, is what I'm looking for.
This all started out as a non-budgeted expense per se, and, um, our finance director, Jenny, will talk about where we're at, um, you know, through six months, and, you know, we're looking okay. I, I think Councilor Lorenz and I had a little discussion about where we're at, um, financially, and, and we're okay, um, I always start getting nervous in September, um, even though we're, we're tracking well and everything, you know, um, stuff happens. So, I, I think that, um, the full price in this budget year is a stretch for us, uh, to be honest, and, uh, I was kinda writing myself a note that said, well, you know, if you, if you wanted to entertain that, you might go in mid-range in there and have it, you know, budgeted for next year as, you know, the higher expense, and you, you know, so you can have to structure a contract that way or something, and come back and do a six-month review to then go to a next step level of pricing. You know, I'm, I'm pretty confident, and Jenny could throw something at me, she agrees that, you know, ballpark-wise, we're doing, we're doing fine. But, you know, we, we do have a number of considerations, like the fabulous Gallagher Amendment to deal with in the next few years, um, which I don't know if you're all familiar with that, we can bring you a presentation, it's totally stunning, good government stuff, unintended consequences and property taxes. Not a huge hit for us, but in twenty twenty, now we'll see a reduction in property tax revenue that, hopefully, that will be offset by sales tax revenue. So, we don't, you know, we're in a stage where these businesses are, are starting up and things are happening, and that will add to our sales tax revenue base, but, you know, we're, they're, they're here, and so they're not really generating that revenue yet, so, you know, I'm generally pretty conservative on numbers just because, um, I am, but I think that's, you know, something that you all have to decide, and-
I think we still have some questions over here.
My name is Wanda Harmon, and I just have a concern, I don't know the city budget, I don't know how much money we have, how much we bringing, how much we spend. I do know that we have a problem with our Sky High Building, and I know that if we do not get that building back up, or rebuilt, or have a new building, that we stand to lose great deal of business coming into this through the, um, the events that we have there. And I don't, I, and of course, we have to spend money to make money, I understand how that goes, but as we make decisions about how we're gonna spend the money, I want to hold that, uh, Sky High Building, remodeling or rebuild or brand-new building as a priority for the city. If we are not able to keep the Ag Conference here, the Crane Festival here, the, the Home and Garden Show, there's a whole variety, the 4-H people, I know we raised their prices this year and then gave them a discount, there's many, many things that happen in that building that absolutely affect every business in town. And, and without having that building re, new, a new building there, we're in a lot of trouble. So, I understand you wanna make more money, I get that, I know it takes money to make money, but I am very concerned that we don't have that as a high of priority now, and I think it's something we need to consider. Thank you for hearing me.
I'd be happy to address that.
Forrest speak to that, he's very diverse.
Yeah, so, uh, as far as that being a priority, it is a high priority. Um, we did prove that the building itself is structurally sound, so, you know, that's a good thing, we just did obtain a planning grant from the Department of Local Affairs, um, towards a seventy-five thousand dollar planning project to look at the redevelopment of Sky High Park, and so that process, um, the agreement is, uh, human works. Have we had that a tight, thank you?
We are a little concerned, because I've heard, and I haven't followed up to find out the fit, where's and what for us about this, but I understand the new convention center building, uh, event center is gonna be built in Alamosa at the Farm Park within the next year or so, they've already approved their budget, they already have all their architectural drawings done, I suspect they'll be breaking ground within the year, and I'm concerned that we lose the Ag Conference to Alamosa or to some other place, and it's something that, I know, within the chamber, we're quite concerned about it.
Well, and I, I recognize that as well, um, the question, part of this question of what those, you know, what the cost means for going there, um, I think we, you know, we recognize the value of all these events to our community, and so that was why we worked really hard to make sure that the building, um, you know, we had some disagreements about whether the existing building was still okay, and we have a certified engineer's opinion that it is. Uh, so we're starting this planning process, um, here, now there's a meeting, hmm, a few weeks from now or whatever, I think, so, sorry, I'm not remembering dates, with the users groups, to start kind of defining the program, we'll, and as soon as we have the grant agreement signed with the state, which it'll be in the front of the council, the next meeting to sign that, then, um, we will issue an RFP, we actually, you know, have a timeframe review to that, we'll issue the RFP for the planning process and getting that going. Um, whether we can beat Alamos to the punch on breaking ground, hard to say, and it depends on the complexity of their project, and how long it takes them to build it versus us. I mean, I think we're talking about, um, something that works, but that's simple, um, you know, and I'm not saying anything negative about Alamos, but they tend to go fancy, and fancy costs more money and takes longer, and I'm, and I haven't heard that they have all their planning in place, so, um, yeah, it's certainly a concern.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the Sky High Building too, and I'd be very interested in, in the meeting where you registered up, said that that's gonna be discussed, but to get back to, uh, whether or not you're removing Mr. Douglas's police, apparently, uh, finances are a problem, you have a slide on here that showed how much tax revenue, would you mind showing that number again?
This one here? Well, it's not tax revenue, this is actually, it means taxable commercial property, so, these are buildings that we're not being, we're not paying taxes on because you owned them, so, and now that's, uh, changing, we're renting them out. Actually, LBA is paying for those renovations, we're doing it on our own dime, has nothing to do with what you guys are giving us, I'm doing it on my own dime, basically, um, to renovate these buildings and get them into, into workable buildings. We've already invested quite a bit in, uh, a couple of these buildings, so, it's, uh, it's just been an ongoing process.
Yeah, and if I could, uh, interject, Mike was just asking me what I was saying about, if you will, a stair step, if you will, you know, the current amount we have, I realize, actually, I think the effort is maybe not enough, but, um, when we're talking about our budget, which is upcoming, we could actually look at that, um, the fuller amount as we go through our budget process, so, um, you know, I think that that, fiscally, that's the most prudent, um, approach for the city, and I guess that was kinda what I was recommending, but I think I sounded too vague, so.
And I'm totally fine with, you know, stair stepping something until you guys go through your process, and I, I'm totally fine with that, I'm, I'm here for the long haul, I think I've proven that, I'm not going anywhere, you know, I've taken on churches and buildings my own and businesses of my own, so I don't, I don't, I don't plan on, you know, going anywhere, so.
Any other questions? Talk about this work session or something, between now and the next meeting?
There is, there's actually a work session on the, that Forrest is proposing.
A number of them, yeah, we can certainly work that into-
And-
Okay.
From my point of view, um, it would've been nice to have had more data to look at in our packet before this meeting, to give it more thought. Rather than just their proposal, but that's, that's how I feel.
Sure.
That, rather than having to make a, a decision in a few minutes. And so, spending some time with the next work session, talking about it, if other people have comments or concerns, or, and I would love to hear more, what this lady had to say, because for me, that was one of the things in the packet, there were no testimonies, you brought them, but there were no testimonies that we saw before. You brought them, but there were no testimonies that we saw before. So that's an important thing because numbers, numbers are numbers. Numbers can be manipulated, but testimony can't, in my opinion. So for me, that's, that's a very good practice.
So then I ask this because I don't want to have a lapse in our agreement. Can we at least agree to, you know, continue with what we're doing? Because right now, as of technically our agreement, I've been working this month at no charge because technically our agreement ended August, in August. So I just want to, can we at least continue it on until we can have everything figured out?
I think that's fair.
Or at least, you know, meet in the middle, like we talked about, meet in the middle or something. Because honestly, I feel like I've been doing this full-time. I don't think there's anybody in this room that can, can say differently. As a matter of fact, I know there's nobody in this room that can say differently, but nobody's worked harder on this than I am. I promise you that. You can ask my wife. She's mad, she's always mad at me because I'm always going. But I'm down and determined to make it happen. I'm down and determined to grow the town. So, you know, I've put way more, if you look at the hours that I promised to commit to this, I've put at least triple that. I promise you that.
Well, I'm a businessman, and I am wholly in favor of everything you're doing. I would simply move that we continue the contract as it stands and until we can meet and discuss any further negotiations.
I would second that.
Fair enough. And you didn't second it to accept as we have been doing?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a suggestion as to form of the motion?
Yes, sir.
That would be to extend the current contract until deliberations of the council.
So, maybe.
No, there's no lapse.
Just been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Personally, I just want to commend you. I think you've worked hard, and I know that Montevista and its citizens can be a tough saying. And those were very measured words.
That was, yeah, I was going to say, that was very nice. That was very nice.
I've grown up here, and I know, but I think you've done an amazing job. And I have heard a lot of the negative from folks, but I've personally seen a lot of the positive. And I just, I commend you. I think you're doing a very good job. And I don't know anyone else who's been able to fill 10 buildings in a matter of six months with local people to, with businesses and that are going to contribute to our tax base and who are already here because we know a lot of people move here and they don't stay. They go, oh, my gosh, it's January, and they leave. They don't like that. And so I commend you, and those are long-term businesses. And in the future, if we can bring in some other more well-known businesses, that's great. I don't think that's a negative thing at all. I don't think we want to be that town necessarily that's just filled with those McDonald's and things like that. But I think they do help and contribute to the growth of small businesses in towns. So I want to tell you, good job.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. It's been a long, long six months.
I appreciate your creativity too. You've always got a new, not new idea, a new angle. You've even got a new company started. It's, you know.
And I didn't add it to the list, if you notice. I didn't add it to the list.
That's.
Even though I could have.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right. That's another new business.
That's right.
Yeah, I want to come walk through that church. I've always wanted to go in it for years.
It's a beautiful, beautiful building. I cannot wait to turn that into a training center and get that. We're going to be able to train upstairs and then provide lunch downstairs. We're going to put a commercial kitchen in and they can come downstairs. So the whole day, they're just in that building, getting, getting trained.
Is there wrong yet? Did Trinada or Trinad?
Yeah, so we're, like I said, I mentioned that in the, as well as we're, you know, this is just the tip of the iceberg. Honestly, I didn't tell you half the stuff we're working on. I mean, again, we're still talking with Trinada about tech school here. We're still talking about ethanol plant that's coming, you know, the guy wants to come in and he's just, he's about 90% there with all his funding and stuff in place. And so, you know, there's a bunch of other stuff that's coming, but I didn't want to fill it with anything that I wasn't 100% sure of.
My bucket of distillers.
I think people would like to hear that, though, and maybe some of the people who are more skeptical. But that's an important thing to discuss and, and have in your data, you know, who you have talked to and who else is possibly interested. Because I, I think we just need to be completely honest with the residents about, about who you have talked to, who you are talking to. And I would also like to know more, you know, hear more from the existing businesses that you coached, that kind of thing. My other concern is that at the next meeting, we're going to be talking about budget deficits or deficiencies and needing to vote on that. And so moving forward with a one-year contract, that's a big concern for me because I, I'm really concerned about whether or not that amount of money is available, especially since it wasn't in this 18 budget to begin with.
Sure.
So I truly appreciate what you're doing, but I do have more reservations about the financial aspects.
Sure, I totally understand. But just, just so we're all on the same page here, the average, and I hate to even use this term because I don't, the average economic advisor, counselor for a city in, in Colorado is over double, actually, of what you're getting here where you get a three-man team, you get the, the data services, it's a $250,000 a year subscription. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pluses to that. Yes, I didn't bring everybody that I've been coaching, but, you know, that's, yeah, I'm, again, it's at various stages of coaching. So some of them took my advice, some of them said, heck, no, I'm not interested in what you have to say. That's fine. It was just my job to give, to give my opinion, so bless whoever had them.
I think that's an important part of the data, though, for us to look at.
Sure, sure. Okay.
It's all about data, man.
It's all about data.
Well, this was an investment that our part from the beginning, it's not, I don't look at it as an expense, but an investment. And you, the, the question about an investment is what's the return? And I think you've, you've illustrated that pretty well, so.
In all fairness, I think I've far exceeded what anybody originally thought could happen in six months, including myself, to be honest with you. I didn't know if I could really do, you know, double-digit businesses in, in this town. I mean, that's, in a town of 4,500 people, it just doesn't happen. You're more than welcome to call any other town in Colorado 10 businesses in six months in a town of 4,500 just does not, a city of 4,500 just doesn't happen. You know, so I believe when we, when Forrest and I talked, we were happy to have three people in negotiations for having a business started in six months. And here we go, we had 10 plus over 30 that we're in negotiations with. So that's a huge difference.
Yes, can I have the motion on the floor?
Yes. Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? Do you have?
Councilor Lorenz?
No.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
One-on-one, motion carries.
Mr. Polston, you had your hand up for a question directed at the council. My, my question was answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Ron. Jennifer?
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, so that is kind of a tough act for me to have to follow a little bit, especially since we're going to start talking budget and numbers. I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty, but Mr. Douglas's budget amendment isn't the only concern and area. I don't know how far I can take this or how far I want to go with this, but like I said, that's, Forrest and I have had several conversations over the last couple of weeks, and there's been a lot that's been missed that we're going to have to clean up and fix. So I do recommend that we are on the side of caution and get our data in order before we make a decision such as that large. So I'm going to leave that there for you guys to kind of think about and go forward with what's in your packets. I worked really hard to get through the end of July's financials. I'm very confident in where we're at with the numbers. As you'll see in there, the general funds revenue is at 67% of the approved budget or 1.9 million, basically. Your biggest source of that, as always, is going to be your tax revenues. This is, we're at 58% of the year, and so seeing 67, you go, great, we're ahead of the game. No, you're not. It is a trend, and we've noticed a trend that in years past, come September, October, that levels out, and by the end of the year, you're right on budget. So just because it looks like you have maybe an extra 10%, I would err on the side of caution that we have a few more months to go in the year. So, and, and we do notice that that trend levels out and we kind of even out there. Our expenditures are in the general fund are at 55% of the approved budget or one, basically 1.6 million. The largest expenditure is in the police department of operating costs of $679,000. So I don't think that's any surprise. I think the police department's always been the largest part of the budget for the general fund. As of month end, the general fund's portion of cash in the main checking account is $380,000, which is an increase of 164% since December of last year, December 31st of 2017. That's really great. The unrestricted cash assets to date in the general fund are $518,000 and some change. Again, though, we, that looks like great numbers, but we've had to work really hard to get the fund balance up, and we kind of need that as a cushion right now to fix the budget amendments that are coming up. So it looks good, and, and as Forrest stated, we are sound, we are okay. I wouldn't go off and say we're great and have a lot of extra money to play with because we definitely don't. Again, we need to be cautious. In the general fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $282,000 and some change, increasing the fund balance to $837,476 from $555,143 as of December 31st, 2017. Again, though, you need to keep in mind that $90,000 of that fund balance is for Tabor, so it's restricted to that. And again, we are, coming up next council meeting, I will have budget amendments for you guys. We are going to have to dip into the fund balance to cover that. So moving on to the water fund, total revenues in the water fund were at 70% of the approved budget or $607,483. A majority of the amount relates to the charges for services totaling $570,000. We are going to need to do a budget amendment to account for some grant funds there. Again, though, I don't want you to get too excited at that 70% number because the water fund and the sewer fund are the same as the general fund. Those monies start leveling out, we start seeing a decrease. And there's been some changes that we can't prove yet, but we're probably going to come in under expected revenues for that. So again, just, just to kind of be mindful of that. Expenditures at the month end for the water fund were at 46% of the approved budget or $503,403. Currently, those expenditures are split fairly equal between the administration department and the water supply department, which are the two main departments in, in that fund. So as of July 31st, unrestricted cash for the water fund is $992,520, which has increased by 5% since December of 2017. In the water fund, revenues exceed expenditures by $104,000 and some change, increasing the fund balance to 1.8 million and some change. So, but again, there's some budget amendments that are going to have to be done in the water fund, so. Moving on to the sewer fund, revenues as of July 31st in the sewer fund were at 42%, which is less than where we should be. We should be at least at 58%, and we're not there. So it's down just a little bit. The approved budget amount was $629,000. The majority of this relates, again, to the service charges, charges of $569,000. So the expenditures in the sewer fund were at 36% of the approved budget or $647,623. The majority of those relate to the sewage disposal department and the administrative costs. Sewerage disposal was at $171,000, administrative costs at $213,000, excuse me, respectively. As of July 31st, unrestricted cash for the sewer fund is at $252,672, which is a decrease in that of 24% since December 31st, 2017. In the sewer fund, expenditures exceed revenues by $18,000, decreasing the fund balance to 3.9. So we do have some projects coming up that we're going to have to do and use that fund balance in order to, to work on the infrastructure for, for the city of Montevista. So again, we need to be mindful of where we're at there. If you guys have questions or anything like that or would like more detailed financials, I'd be more than happy to print those off at a later time and get them to you. So I would like to take just a minute and, and acknowledge the department heads for doing a really good job considering financials haven't been done for seven months and we're into August. So I want to commend the department heads and Forrest for being able to stay on track as well as they did without having concrete numbers in front of them for this year. So that's basically all I have.
Thank you.
Staff report. Forrest? Okay, I'll start with the backside of my report. So in my report, I have suggested for a number of work sessions. And, you know, three work sessions, actually, a little modification to that. So we're suggesting for September 18th that we have a work session to discuss three items and overview of the budget process for the 2019 budget, which would include a discussion of the potential budget amendments, because you'll actually be seeing those on the 20th for approval by resolution, so we can kind of go through those. Jenny's doing a great job, actually went through the draft of those today, and, you know, they are what they are, not cryptic or anything. You know, but as I said, every time it gets to September, and I would echo her comment that, you know, the department heads have been mindful of their spending and we are, you know, we're within the targets. There were some issues in the actual budget that was adopted regarding some expenditures, particularly related to personnel benefit costs and such. So those are part of what we've been planning for, for year end. Those won't come up in your budget amendments next meeting, but they're also part of what we're looking at as overall costs. And we'll point out that the city actually, on a best practices standpoint, we do have adequate cash actually to meet the best practices for operating reserves. So, and we actually had that going into this year, and we will have that at the end of the year, barring unforeseen circumstances. But we're definitely on track for that. So I'd suggest you set a September 18th work session for those purposes. I think the October 9th work session, workshop there, don't know why, but work session with neighborhood watch and the police department. And I would like to add to that the discussion of local business assist to that meeting as well, so we have two topics instead of one. And then October 16th, we would have, we'll be well into the budget process, we'll meet with the council to discuss, you know, what things are looking like, how we're relating those to the comprehensive plan. So those are three workshops that we request the council set aside. In addition to another thing that popped up between Monday, when I and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant Program, sorry for the title, which is administered by DOLA. And previously, although we actually have gotten some of those funds this year, which was kinda interesting, I think they actually changed the program guidelines this spring, and I don't know that they told us, but we got a couple of small checks from the state, and we're like, hmm. Well, they came out with guidance that basically said that the way the program is now structured, that they're concentrating on rural areas, some of the criteria they had before they were relieved. So, essentially, in order to get these funds, we have to opt-in. And I'll tell you, I take the liberty of filling out the application, and the only thing that we need to submit it is the council's approval, which I will ask you for this evening. I have no idea how much money that may equate to, might be a few hundred dollars or a few thousand. Their webpage that's supposed to give the formulae thing doesn't work. You get the four oh four era that the state's familiar with or famous for, depending on how you wanna look at, but in my opinion, if it yielded a thousand dollars for marijuana-related enforcement for the police department, they can use it. Allow them to do some targeted activities. It runs kinda like other grant programs they have, where you do a quarterly report based on your funding, what activities you have, and I'm sure the chief can figure out ways to use that. So, my recommendation would be that the council approves that tonight, and we'll see what it yields. If you do approve it, we will get an appropriation, it's just unknown what that would be, and I would actually ask you to vote on that this evening. Like I said, there's no downside to it, there's no match to their grant, so all we have to do is do work to comply with it. It's... since we're looking at it, there's stuff that we already do that that would fall right in, along with some amendments we're gonna make to our code regarding particularly minors in possession of marijuana, so...
On that, just want you to clarify the opt-in part of that. It's opt-in for the grant, it's not an opt-in city?
Oh, it has... no, 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 no.
I just want that clarified.
Right, no. This has nothing to do with the approval of marijuana use in the city, it's just opting into the program. If you choose not to, they don't send you any money. So, yeah, that's an unfortunate selection of terms from them, but no, it doesn't change the city's code where we are opted out of retail and commercial and medical marijuana, so...
Would you just, for everyone in the audience, read the purpose of the grant, so that they understand what the grant money will purchase for us and you?
Sure. So, basically, it's a financial assistance grant for investigations and our prosecution expenses of unlicensed marijuana cultivation or distribution operations. That includes personnel on overtime, contractual services, equipment supplies, travel, so for training, pre-trial incarceration expenses, medical expenses related to injury or exposure during marijuana investigation for our personnel, and the purchase of information, informants or evidence contraband. So, it's kind of a broad application for that. There is a piece that they talk about funding the public defender's office, that only applies to counties that opt-in, it does not apply to whatever funds we get.
Cities that opt-in.
Right, so cities and towns, it's our pot of money, whatever it turns out to be. And I can go on with my report, or you guys can vote on that real quick, whichever you prefer.
Well, I would move that we accept the Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant Program and allow Forrest to move forward with the application for that grant.
Second. It's been moved in second, it is accepted. Grant Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant, and allow Forrest to move on with... is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellicourt?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. So, my... I will, after the meeting tonight, go press the button that you approved it on this date, and it'll be on electronic land. So, one other item this evening, which I misspoke about earlier, and I apologize for it's been a kinda hectic week, but in fact, I have the grant agreement from DOLA for the multi-use facility plan, planning grant. And as you know, the council approved for submission of that grant, and I would like you to approve the mayor executing that grant. It is a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from DOLA for planning purposes, and in our application, we indicate that the city would provide direct match of that along with our partners. And once this is signed, it goes back to the state, I'm gonna guess it'll take them less than thirty days, they then have to have the comptroller sign it, and Director DOLA and that kinda stuff, but then we're in business as far as this planning process goes, so... Yeah, I'm sorry, I kind of, in all this fun, I kind of forgot about it, and, you know, I apologize for that, but it's ready to go, so if y'all would approve the mayor signing that tonight, that would be great.
I move that we approve signing the DOLA grant.
For the Montevista multi-use facility plan.
Right, so that we can move forward with the multi-use facility.
I'll second that. Been moved in second, it is approved, kind of the signature of this, of the DOLA grant for the Sky High Park complex. Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellicourt?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. And on the minor subdivision, which you approved after the meeting, mayor, you'll need to sign, it'll be your first plat signature. And our next meeting, we have another one that you'll be assigned, so you'll forever be indelibly marked in the county property records. So, that should be a landmark thing. Okay, so not to make the meeting any longer, I think we covered the other things, except for one, which you all probably have seen this, but the sidewalk south of the Faith Hickley Veterans Memorial Park is completed. Why is the snow fence still there? 'Cause it's curing, right? So, it'll be, you know, it came out, the contractor did a really nice job. We have paid the contractor for the work, and I now have the receipts, and I, as you rightly recall, we have forty... four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollar grant, a mini-grant from DOLA through the Development Resource Group, so we've got value added for your... our, the city's membership to that, and I'll be submitting for that reimbursement, and so we should get that portion of it back within thirty days. We promised to have it done before Veterans Day, and Rob did a really good job getting the RFP out, getting bids, getting it done, so kudos to him, and the contractor was, you know, they... he was jumping at the bit, and he got it done, and I think it's a really nice job, once the snow fence is gone. I think Rob did mention one thing on the park this evening, so, you know, it's got that beautiful new fence, and at the south end, there's two panels missing. Why are those two panels missing? So, where it joins the school parking lot for the auditorium, and there's one more bench that needs to go in there, and so they're gonna hold off on that until that bench gets installed, and once that happens, they'll finish the fence, but I think that project's looking very nice as well. Somehow miraculously, the sod was saved, which, you know, I think, thank God for the rain, right? I mean, that helped, but his crews did a lot of work to save that, 'cause you all remember what it looked like the first summer?
It was terrible.
And, you know, that was a ninety percent loss of the sod, but it's back, so that was pretty exciting, we're really happy to get that done, and I think I put in my memo to y'all last week, so our enterprise zone application's another piece of this puzzle. Our local review should be done next week. Gail's been helping with it, we've been going back and forth, and today, she's like, "Okay, I think we're good for the local review." Then it goes up to the state peer review group, so we should have an answer back on both of those by mid-October. And those are five-year programs, so, you know, and one of them is the Sky High Park project. I think that's all I have tonight, unless you have any questions. Work sessions? Just need to approve that we have those? Yes, sir, that's all you need to do, and the clerk will note it for the record, and we'll get the appropriate notifications out to folks, and I will, on the September eighteenth work session, the code of conduct item, I will actually get you those materials for that next week, so you'll have adequate time to read through those. Remember, we brought that subject forth a number of months ago, and I kind of turned it into a couple of documents, one which is a codified piece, and another piece which is more like your code of ethics kinda piece, so we can have that discussion that night, but I will get those materials to you next week. Do you have to have a motion? We just approved it, right?
Yeah, we don't need a motion.
So, approved. Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Forrest. Mr. Trugill? It's your turn to line this out.
All right, mayor, council, thank you. I don't have a whole lot here, I'll just kinda give you, we bring you up to speed on things that are going on. We did have a public meeting here with the planning commission on the division of land by Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Gonzalez, and that, of course, was recommended, and I think it was interesting to note, we did have a lot of folks that thought they might have a concern regarding the density, but when folks kinda learned that the division actually reduced the potential density, a lot of the concern, I think, went away, so I think that probably will be a good deal. We did hear comments as well from lots of folks on chickens, and so maybe there'll be more things coming around here on that issue. And I don't know if the council, we did receive a potential claim about a week ago, and maybe some of you are aware of it, but I've done a little bit of research, talked to the SIRS of folks, and I think we feel like we're in pretty good shape on that. The... had a busy day at court the other day, I think things had been continued maybe to that day, and so we've resolved quite a few cases and continuing to do that. I am gonna start working, I think the chief had requested that we do a modification of our code for underage minors in possession, as well as possession of marijuana, and so I did speak with Judge Zollers about that issue, and as well as doing our penalty assessments, amending that by resolution, so I'm gonna put together some things on that, and it probably goes hand in hand with that grant, I'm guessing, but I think, you know, it looks like that's something that we probably need to address. There are folks that, I mean, there are minors that are in possession of marijuana, and so we're trying to run a lot of these folks through different programs that will help them in the future. There's various programs of either that or community service that can be done, and so we're trying to run those through Jaime mostly, and get him some help when he needs it. So hopefully, we'll have that, get going on that, and other than that, I really don't have anything else, unless the council has any questions or comments, but there's always something going here, so...
Apparently so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nika? Welcome back.
Thank you. I feel like I haven't been here in a really long time, but...
You haven't.
Well, and maybe, I'm not gonna argue, 'cause I honestly can't even remember the last time I was here. We had a crazy, insane, busy summer, but we survived and started the after-school program. Some few things that went on this summer, we ended August ninth, and then took a much-needed week, well, almost a whole week off. We had some training and stuff to get done that week, so it wasn't a full week off, but I got as much sleep as I possibly could. I watched a lot of TV, Jesse was like, "I've never watched TV," and he got to watch TV for the whole week, he was super tired about that. Average attendance during the summers, we teamed sixty-five and seventy kids each day. We went to Hooper, we went to the Creek Theater, we enjoyed the sand dunes. Towards the end of the summer, we took a trip to Denver to go pick up our minibus, and so we brought our minibus back to use for the summer program. That was the bus that we purchased with the NRPA funds that we had received from the grant, and the bus got a lot of use, I think, like, not even a week after we brought it home. I think it was the following week we brought it home, our bus driver was sick, and I didn't have enough notice to cancel the field trip, so that little minibus took, like, six trips to Hooper that day. We were like, "We're gonna make it work." So, between the bus and our van, we got our small group of kids. We didn't have a lot going, so it's not like I was only taking ten kids at a time and took all sixty kids. I think we only had, we had less than thirty that had to go, so we made it work.
You should've gone.
Good, right? Did, you were out of town. I know Gary really jumped up and helped us a lot this summer. My originally very reliable driver had a lot of stuff going on, and she just had to cancel on a couple of times this summer, and I didn't get enough notice, and Gary did a good job stepping up and helping us out a couple times. We... when we finally got the bus back, we were able to actually utilize it to get our kids around the community a little bit more. They made it out to the community garden a little quicker and had more time to spend there, so they really excited, were excited about that. We got out to the animal shelter once, there was some miscommunication, so we weren't able to go. We went back the second time, but it was just kinda a mess trying to get it back. So, we will prepare better next year, so that we can make sure we're there a lot more often than we were able to this year. So, at the end of the summer, we had our visit from the NRPA, they came down and did our focus groups with some parents and some stakeholders and some community members. They were really excited to see our program at work and see the staff interact with the kids and talk to the kids and get to know what our program was about, get to know our impact on the community and what our parents felt about our program. The community stakeholders that we had joined us for those focus groups. I wasn't part of it, so I don't know what was said or what was discussed, either with those or the parent groups, but they were really impressed with the amount of knowledge that the community had and the amount of knowledge the parents had about our program, and we're very thankful for getting to come down and take a look at our program. At the end of their session there, we took them down to the community garden, so that they can see the hard work that our kids had done before summer had started, 'cause we, with another grant fund, we had purchased a bunch of seeds and did some starter plants for the garden. I don't know how many of those actually made it over there to get transplant, but the folks at the garden were really good at making sure that they were getting watered and were taken care of, even when our kids couldn't make it over to help out. And they've been amazing about taking some of the produce that came from our part of the garden and selling it at the farmer's market for us also. So, with that being, as big of a success as it was this year, we will definitely plan a little harder next year to make sure we can continue that, and we can actually pitch in a little more than we were able to this year. After that, they went over and hung out at National Night Out, just to see the, the interaction and just take a look at everything. They were really impressed with how the community came together that evening. So, for us, it was a huge success, and I didn't have to do really any planning, thanks to the National Night Out event. So for us, it was a huge success, and I didn't have to do really any planning thanks to the National Night Out event. Let's see, the school year, we started August 21st for after-school. Our week started out a little slow. I think we had like 25 to 30. By the end of that week, we were, we jumped up to about 50. This week, I know yesterday, we had, what did you serve for snacks? 68 kids. We served 68 kids for snacks. We had over 70 kids yesterday in the program alone. Today, we were close to 65 again. The only time I really get a good head count was when we separated them at the gate to walk them in smaller groups. So I know I had 25 in the first group, and there was between 25 and 30 in the second group. When I go back and count attendance and double-check attendance, no official numbers, but we're still hitting between 65 and 70 every day for those short three hours after-school. Some other exciting news, I got a phone call on Tuesday morning from Stephanie Clever, who is no longer with the Monmouth School District. She's at Sergeant School District now. But the school district is getting some new technology out there. And Sergeant School District actually donated five smart boards for Kids Connection. We actually went out and picked up the smart boards and projectors for the facility. So Brandon, I'll be talking with you soon. We just went out there and we're like, we're taking everything that we can. And I was like, I'll call you guys if we're missing anything once IT has a look at what kind of disaster we brought to them. But we were super excited. They're in really good condition, and we didn't have to pay for them, so.
Nice.
Super excited. All we had to do was go out there and pick them up. We ended up with three 45-inch smart boards and two 55-inch. So we're super excited about putting those to use and hopefully saving some of the paper that I'm printing out for staff to run our committee's health curriculum. Saturday, we will be out at the Potato Fest helping out with kids' games from 10 to 2. And then the other big thing we have coming up will be our second annual poker tournament. We have finally set a date, and that will be actually Saturday, October 20th. Originally, it was going to be the 27th, but Boys and Girls Club has their big gala that evening, so we didn't want to conflict with them. So we chose to go ahead and hold it a week sooner, Saturday, October 20th at 5:00 PM. That will be at the Montavilla Inn hosted by Dre Guy's Arms. And hopefully, we will have a pretty good turnout. It's been shared on our Facebook page already, the city's Facebook page. All of the Facebook pages have shared the event already. And that's also how we're going to get the word out about the tournament. And you can make donations on there. You can become a sponsor on that page. Or you can pay your player fee to play that evening. We're looking at tickets to play. It'll be $50 a person with additional buy-ins. And we have some additional sponsorship opportunities available for the local business community. So this next week, everything just kind of finalized today, and the Facebook tweet actually just got posted today. So I will be getting the word around to local businesses about these sponsorship opportunities. With those opportunities, you get a certain number of employees at your business that can play in the tournament for free. We're hoping to have four tables this year. We had two tables going last year. So we're hoping to get at least four tables and double what we had made last year. I think after all was said and done, we came close to profiting, or the main part of the donation was like $4,500 after all of the fees and purchases for the tournament happened. So we made a pretty good amount of money, but we now have all the poker tables, all the poker chips. Everything is owned now, so we don't have to do any of that startup cost. And actually, as of today, we already have $600 in donations. So within like an hour or so of posting it, and Alex had sent out some emails to some of the sponsors that he had reached out to last year. He ended up with $600 in donations already. So other than that, I got an email from Andrea Oakes-Hadameo, or is it Hadameo-Oakes? One of the two. I was going backwards. But from RE Seas Balloon Festival, that they've kind of contributed every year. They put up like a donation or something. I'm not exactly sure how it works. But the last couple of years, they've chosen to give the funds to Kids Connection, and so we will be receiving that donation. It was a little over $700, so I will be getting in touch with her so she can come over and stand in a big bunch of screaming children while she takes a picture, so. Other than that, that's pretty much all that's been going on. It's been kind of mellow, and we're back to a normal day. It's three hours a day after school, so I have a lot of time to catch up on everything else. You have any questions for me?
Nope.
All right. Thank you.
The poker tournament.
Keep pushing that out there.
I will. I will actually, I'll send out an email to all of you, so if you would help me with that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Call me. I'm happy to.
Okay.
Jaime here for his report, or somebody else did that? You know, mayor, he had got called out to do some coaching tonight, but kind of thought he'd be here by now, but... So I guess if you have any questions about his report, let me or him know and...
It's a busy time for him. Everything's gearing up right now in the city recreation department, so I'm sure he's busy.
Yeah, looking at his report, I can understand why he's not...
Right? Okay.
All right, we recess this meeting until September 21st? Oh, yeah, is there any comments?
I mean, from the council, I'm sorry.
Kathy?
I'm good for tonight. I'm great. I just want to say thank you to all the high school kids for coming. Don't make this a one-time experience. Come back. We like to see you here, and it was nice to see everyone in the, the audience too. It's good to have your support. I'm glad to know you're involved.
Well, actually, I had several, but I'm only going to mention one since it's kind of late. But just want to reiterate what Staff Sergeant Nagley had to, had to say. If you are a veteran, you know a veteran, you've heard of one, if you have any interest in that at all, by all means, just at least follow up. I think he's got plenty of material. I hope you liked it there. Maybe not.
There's some stuff left.
Left on the table that you can pick up. And his website, I don't have, but if you Google SLB Veterans Coalition, that will come up. And it's, I've been down there several times, and it does things that I would never have imagined that could be accomplished in a relatively short period of time directly with the leadership within the state and with the, it's fascinating. I've never, anyhow. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that, but yeah, just follow up with that, support it, and refer any veteran that has any question or need, whatever, to that facility. I've seen some great things happen down here.
Dave, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight at the whole house, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody's comments, because we are one community, and we stand strong with that. And I appreciate all the youth that's supported. You guys are our future, so I appreciate you being here. So thank you very much, and everything that everybody does at the city, I appreciate it. So we will recess this meeting until September 21st, correct?